Okay, we still haven't found this one? Because the light comes on and then it just shut off.
We should go with that. I don't know. So sorry. It's not good. No, it's not. Why is it? All of them. Thank you. Oh, you were very fast. Oh, I sure didn't have it. I think it's all taken down. That didn't work out. Oh, it's just one other. What's the same thing? They started through the public. And the house like here. You can start on this and go on this way. And then. Well, this is why this is wonderful. So y'all take all the steps. The advisor can. Your trip. So my first. I don't know. I was. And all those. Seventy days now. Yeah. It's a good one. But I stand very well. This is this one. I don't think it. That's right. What is the community? Do you? Let me get over there. There. But that's true. So that's still. You're acting. Yeah. I mean, I just saw. That would be all. I'm. It would all be. The. And that is. I would also. Yeah. When they're freezing. They're freezing. Yes. Yeah. So. This is. They. They'll attach to the top. And so still. What I'm wondering is I want to put my real. Well, it's not hot. Yeah. That's all. Yeah. Yeah. Of course. Which you. So back. That's that. This is your. This is. We have. There's. Six. So. I feel like. It was. It's also. We should. Should. Very nice. So this is. And remember that. It's. I was seeing what I had. I've been. Only. This is. Test. But. So. Yeah. I put it down. And. I want to say. We're. I was wanting to. I have some problems. Well. Why do you? Well, you know. I'm saying that. You're. So. I'm. So. I don't think. So. But. There's. All. There's. He has. But yeah. Now. This is. You. That's all right. Yes. I. I think. One. Oh. 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 But. Like. Okay. Right. Yes. Yeah. Probably need to. I would say. That's. It's. I don't want to. We. I. Well. For all. Well, I see. Um. I saw. Okay. Well, you turned on. Oh. But do you? Just. Things. Right. That's. So. So. Oh. 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 They. Oh. Oh. It's. You know. It's. You know. Yeah. I think. Oh, I don't. Yeah. Oh. Yeah. Oh. That's. So. Oh. Oh. That was. Oh. I'm. They need. Oh. Oh, sorry. I. It. Any longer. Here. It's. I'm sure. A lot of you can only say, well. Yeah. 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 We put another show. We're. I think. I lost. Back there. Yeah. It's. I'm. I'm. Actually, no, I didn't want to. Sure. But. And. Two. I'm. I'm. I'll. I. I'll. I didn't say. Or. Oh. Oh. Yeah. See. And. I know. Yeah. I don't. But. But. No, I. I don't. I think. It's. Trying to. It's. Don't. For. I'm. Yeah. It wasn't. I just. Especially. Yeah. I thought. Two years. Oh. I'm. I'm. Like. I don't. Literally. I'm. Both. I'm. So. I don't. I told. Yes. I. He said. Yeah. It takes. So. She. You. You're. That's. It's. I guess. I don't. And. It's. Yeah. And so. I guess. She. I'm. Yeah. This is. Correct. I think. Right. Before. Well. Well. I don't. Great. That's. You know. If. You just. And those. That's. That's. Well. Yeah. Yeah. It's. It's. I'm. I'm. No. I'm. It's. Those. Yeah. Yeah. It's only. Yeah. We say. So. It was. Okay. Well. So. Now. Yeah. Yes. Okay. I'm. Well. Um. We didn't. Or again. Oh. Okay. It's. They're. But. You. George. No. Just. What was it? Thought? Thought. Yeah. Well. Well. I. That's like. What? I just. She's. She's. What? It's. The. Since. Yeah. It's. Okay. That. That. Uh. But. I'm. Be. Yeah. Did you? Okay. Um. Actually. It was. Not. I didn't. Good. So. So. I know. You can't do. Or. You know. In here. I'm. Oh. I'm. Yes. Yeah. So. This. So. I put. Oh. Let's. Sorry. I'm. Hey. Did you? Here. I'm. Oh. You don't. Sorry. Yeah. I mean. Oh. Wait. Well. Yeah. The. Was. So. Oh. Now. Wow. And. She. She. Okay. Okay. So. Oh. You. What's? I'm. I'm. On. One. Okay.
All right, everyone. I'll. I'll call this public hearing to order at six P M. September twenty third, twenty twenty four. And. Your. That. Jessica, Stephen, and myself present, so we do have a forum. Um. The matter before the commission is a hearing to be completed for students north to the century code forty dash fifteen dash zero seven for the appointed office of auditor and its appointed officer Adam Salina. Now, I do need to read out some ground rules for this hearing. Um. Number one, the hearing is a public hearing, so it's open for observation. Now stated in the hearing notice, the city and the respondent may offer or present any evidence or discussion which has the bearing upon the preferred charges before the commission. There is not a section for public comment in this hearing, and that would not be appropriate in this setting unless those members of the public. Call the facts and circumstances relating specifically to the issues before the commission board. Hearing will be conducted in an orderly and simple manner. There's not going to be any outbursts from the crowd. Um. Please remain quiet during proceeding. And also, depending on the length of the hearing and the course of the hearing, I may allow a recess at my discretion or at the request of the participants. All right, so the background and process to the board and the attendees. Commissioner Iverson set forth a series of preferred charges on the record at the September sixteenth regular commission meeting on a motion and a second. Abby was suspended from office and a hearing was set for today's date and time in accordance with the terms of North Dakota Century Code forty dash fifteen, actual seven. A hearing notice was prepared and personally served upon Abby for this matter on September eighteenth, twenty twenty four. Um. Would like to enter in a hearing notice and all attachments, which are the summary transcript of nine sixteen twenty twenty four meeting and statutes in the record. Abby, I need to confirm that you received the notice.
I.
Abby, you got. You did this as well. That's being entered in the record.
Exactly. I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, the purpose of this hearing is for the commission to hear facts and take evidence related to the charges set forth, set forth in the notice. Um. Commissioners, you may offer evidence, evidence in the form of record, documents, or witness testimony, and Abby, you may offer evidence in form of records, documents, and witness testimony. Um. After the presentation about the evidence, the commission will hear any thoughts, discussions, or arguments to be offered by the commission members, and any thoughts, discussions, or arguments offered by Abby. After the conclusion of that presentation and discussion from all relevant parties, the commission will proceed to discuss and what findings should be made with regard to each charge. The city attorney may be called upon to help guide the process of the hearing. Liz, I just want to confirm that you're on and you can hear us.
I am, and I can hear you well.
Um. Commission members, are you ready to proceed?
Yes.
Yes.
Abby, you ready to proceed? Um. You believe that you've had enough time to prepare?
I have not, having no time to prepare, but I am ready to. Um. Speak on my behalf.
Okay. All right. Um. I need to read aloud the hearing notice.
Really quickly, I'm sorry. I just, I know, I noticed that there's quite a bit of, um. Exchanges here with Savannah. Were you, did you receive that as well? I just want to make sure that you have the packet if you don't have the full packet.
With Savannah from the bank?
Yep.
Oh, no, no, don't have.
Please can get a copy.
So if I didn't receive these records? And I don't have time to review them? Liz?
Yeah, I think that's a compilation, Abby. Here's what I'll say to that. If you're not prepared to proceed tonight, you have every right to request a continuance. I mean, the law allows a person to be prepared. Those are documents that I think intend to be entered into the record in addition to the notice and statutes. Um. They, they haven't been offered as evidence yet, but why don't, why don't we give Abby a moment to flip through the packet and see if there's anything in there that is concerning to her?
I'm aware of all the documents here, first of Savannah from Bank of Tyoga, and I'm prepared.
Did Abby say she was prepared or was not prepared? Sorry, there was a slight blip.
I am.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to read aloud the hearing notice. So where else the preferred charges submitted on the record at the meeting by Commissioner Iverson are summarized as follows. An alleged violation of North Dakota Century Code forty dash sixteen dash eleven, which is titled Funds Controlled by the Governing Body, Exceptions to Disbursement on Order. That end near during the week of September ninth, twenty twenty four, the auditor without advance authorization or direction from the Tyoga City Commission, pursuant to the provisions of North Dakota Century Code forty dash sixteen dash eleven, did draw out thereafter transfer approximately ten million dollars in city funds from one city account to another city account. And that is here, here and after referred to as the transfer. And that one or more commission members was notified of such occurrence only after the withdrawal and the transfer had occurred. Uh, be the alleged violation or violations of North Dakota Century Code forty dash sixteen dash zero three, which is titled Duties of City Auditor in General. That end near during the week of September ninth, twenty twenty four, the auditor did act outside of the scope of restatutory authority in relation to the transfer in that. Uh, the auditor failed to present the commission communications from the Bank of Tyoga and/or other parties relating to the transfer in violation of subsection eight of North Dakota Century Code forty dash sixteen dash zero three. And/or the auditor failed to promptly, properly comply with subsection, subsection eleven of the North Dakota Century Code forty dash sixteen dash zero three, because the commission members did not direct the transfer and the commission was not promptly informed of the details or accounting of the transfer. All right. Um. Jay, then I'm going to need you to restate the background or series of events and offer or cite dates of relevant evening minutes on the topic. Um. And. Your. Recollection.
Yeah. On September second, during a city commission, I was making motion to designate Bank of Tyoga as the primary bank. I was interrupted by the auditor saying we could legally not do that until January first. I suspended my motion as Liz advised me not to engage in action pretty truly. She said she didn't believe we could engage in substantial change in our financial position until January. Then on September thirteenth, I learned that Abby had transferred ten million dollars without conversation or board approval.
All right, commissioners. Um. Do you have any other evidence or fact, facts relevant to this season's presentation?
Um, just really quickly, the, the commission meeting was actually on September. Before. The day. And the reason that I say that. And the reason that I say that, because on September 3rd, after the commission meeting, can everybody hear me? I tend to turn my head and then they can't hear me. So on September 3rd, Wendy Lenzin came representing the Bank of Tioga. She asked to be on the agenda, and the board approved it, and she came up. And so after the meeting, I called Abby Salinas. I have my call log here. And I just, I wanted to state that what happened was, I was upset. I was upset that she come on, she come up, and get the money is not back. I had felt it was a tad unprofessional. And I was upset because the money had not been moved yet. There's more things to it. I'm not sure if Abby plans on speaking as to why that money hadn't been moved yet. But the money had not been moved yet, and so I got rather harsh. And I said that the money needed to be transferred before the next commission meeting because it was unnecessary drama. And literally said in my mind that it should only take 10 minutes. So I did do that directly after the meeting. There was several times that I had asked Abby in the next coming days if she had transferred the money. I know there was times Veronica was there. I did not direct Veronica to do that, but I asked in front of them if they had transferred it yet because I wanted it to be done in overwith so it didn't cause any unnecessary drama. Since that happened, when the board, when we had our commission meeting on the 13th, I guess I was thrown off a little bit. And I understand if there's questions about banking, it's important that we bring it up. I get that. But I had no idea what's coming. My brain kind of shut down. I ended up leaving shortly after for League of Cities. I was a little worried that maybe I had done something wrong. So while I was at League of Cities, I did ask a couple of questions to a couple of people. I was concerned that maybe I had done something wrong by telling Abby to move it. I have not, I had not even had a chance to go back and look at the minutes. I know there was extensive discussion between the commission, the previous commission. We were supposed to move the 10 million after it expired. We were supposed to transfer. It's not withdrawn. I don't understand the bank lingo, but it does says that it was drawn out. I believe it was just a transfer. A withdrawal and a transfer are two things, two separate things. But I did ask some questions because I was a little concerned that I was in trouble for directing Abby. I did make Liz aware that I possibly had directed Abby to do something that was inappropriate. She basically assured me that I had not believed. And then I also wanted to bring up something. We had talked to the state auditor's office. I'm again not super big on lingo, but I felt it was necessary to bring it up because I just, I want to think of all the phrases. It was from the state auditor's office. Veronica knows the lingo a little bit better. Would you explain what they said? You're going to have to come up to the volume.
Liz, can I do that? You're being called by a commissioner to give testimony, so yes, you should come give testimony.
I'm Veronica Peterson, Deputy Auditor for Tioga. While we were at the League of Cities, we had spoke with one of the employees at the state auditor's office, Dan Cox, and when we were asking just to make sure that some of the policies that we've had done or some of the procedures that we've been doing was something that was overriding for us to be doing, I had asked him how I basically kind of explained to him what had happened and what he said that as far as, because I did tell him the century code, and he had explained that part of the century code. He actually had pointed out that it states drawn out and stated that a transfer going from one city bank type, one city bank account to another city bank account was not drawing out funds. And he said that if the auditor's office were to come to Tioga and do a audit on this transaction, they would find nothing wrong for multiple reasons. What he said is that the first reason is that the money never left the city's possession. It went from one city-owned accounts to another city-owned account. And there were no fund purpose changes. The purpose of those funds never changed. They weren't moved from the general to the street department. Nothing like that changed. Those fund purposes stayed exactly as they were. And the third thing that he had actually said is, yeah, the third thing that they wouldn't find anything wrong with is they wouldn't even see the transaction as a revenue or an expense because it would just be a simple general letter transaction because you're just moving money from one account to another. And he said that it was, he said that it's actually, he made it sound like there's a few other cities that do stuff like that. If they have multiple accounts, one at one bank, one at another bank, and if they move money from one to another, it's, he made it sound like it can be a standard practice. But he did also state that he could not give any kind of legal advice, but that's what he said was that if the auditor's office came in to audit that specific information, they would find nothing wrong with it.
I'm hoping that we can calmly and coolly collect some information and ask some questions. I think I even have some questions. I truthfully believe there's a severe misunderstanding here, and I would like us to look at everything. Or any rash decisions are made. That's.
Stephen, do you have any evidence or facts relevant to the case's presentation?
I don't have anything other than what we're.
Okay. Abby, do you wish to question Jayden's remarks or Jessica's remarks?
I don't wish to question, but I would like to make statements and present some evidence too.
If you would, please.
So I'd like to start by saying that the meeting was not the 13th, it was September 16th. But I want to say that when I started this job, I actually prayed about it. I was letting be of service to people in the community. Since I took the job, my life has been threatened. I've been called a liar. I've been called a mess. I've been, I've had one of my employees directed to look at my files to see if I was illegal. I've been accused of allowing people to take information and spread it out there. Just a number of things that have happened to me, but this, this, this has been the first. I was almost accused of embezzlement, which tarnishes everything I've ever done. It was so embarrassing for me. So embarrassing. I couldn't even speak. I couldn't gather my thoughts. It was very disheartening, very disheartening. But since then, I found some sleep. I feel a little nervous, but I feel like now I can speak. I've gathered some evidence. I'd like to first submit a letter by Kevin Litten. He wrote me a letter to Abby Salinas, City of Tioga, reference to the CD request from November 7th, 2023. It is actually committee, City of Tioga minions. It says, unfortunately, I'm able to attend tonight, tonight's meeting due to work obligation and wrote this letter in place of my attendance. On November 7th, 2023, during a regular scheduled commission meeting for the City of Tioga, the board voted in support of Abby Salinas, City Auditor, to seek a high-interest rate earning account, six-month CD account that would be withdrawn when the CD had matured. When the CD matures, the funds would be placed back into the city's general account before the next construction season. That was on November 7th, 2023. That's in the minutes. So a whole board had approved it then, but I'm going to keep going because there's still more. Commissioner Christensen made a motion and supported the request, which was seconded by Commissioner Mays. The commissioners present that evening were Christensen, Steele, Mays, and all three voted in support of. Fast forward to the middle of June 2024, as my term was ending, it's nearing its end. I learned this CD account had matured. I spoke with City Auditor Salinas and asked her to look into the transfer back into the city's general account. After speaking with Auditor Salinas about this, she went on medical leave, which was scheduled to last an extended period of time. At the end of June 2024, I left my office and did not inquire into further, any further into these funds. If you see additional questions, please feel free to contact me, kevinlitten@gmail.com. Thank you for your time, and again, I apologize for not being able to attend. So you have the minutes?
Before you go on, are you offering that letter into the record for evidence?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Copy, but I will offer it.
Okay.
So now I have the minutes, and actually, it's November 6th. I think I gave the wrong date then. November 6th. Line item number seven says CD accounts. Salinas is requesting permission to seek a high-interest rate earning for six-month CD account, which would be withdrawn when the CD account matures and placed back into the city's general account before the next construction season. Christensen made a motion to have Salinas look into the six-month CD account, seconded by Mays, called the calls for Christiansen, Sandberg, and Rames. The next thing, so now I have permission twice, but the next thing I want to submit is my work schedule. I don't think anybody knows this, but I keep a journal, an everyday log that I do from the time I go into work to the time I leave. I write down every phone call, if it's important or of relevance, like every phone call to Liz, every phone call to Brett, every phone call to Jayden, every phone call to Jessica. So it's admissible in court, so I'm going to present a hearing. On September 3rd, get it out, sorry about this. I came in at nine o'clock in the morning. I had no lunch. I did general work, emails, phone calls. I updated Facebook. I spoke with Veronica, Dan Larson, David Falber, and Matt Lance from NCI regarding Rena's accusation about Peterson. I'll verify she wasn't rude. She answered questions that were asked of her, asked if there was a recording to Matt Lance. He said no. Spoke with insurance company regarding claims, spoke with engineer regarding lead and copper, reviewed vacation of streets by come and go with Larson. Will talk to Rena's about this. Meeting with Pendley regarding commission meeting and vehicle policy that Rena had forwarded me regarding forwarded email regarding email regarding vehicle policy. Set up meeting with Pendley on September 12th to update policy with corrected language. That call took 45 minutes. Commission meeting. After meetings, spoke with Rena's and Iverson, informed him that Bank of Tioga is already the city of title as primary bank account holder. Rena stated he didn't understand why Lenzin was acting this way. I said I was used to it. Phone call from Sandberg after commission meeting regarding Wendy Lenzin stating she is very unprofessional and is trying to cause trouble. She works for a business. She is not a resident and just wants the extra money from First State Banking Trust to be transferred to Bank of Tioga because they earn money from them. And asked me to look into the transfer before the next commission meeting so that this subject can be closed. That call took 48 minutes. My next thing I want to read was on September 13th, 2024. So now I have permission from a whole commission and two commissioners. But the next one was September 13th, 2024. And excuse me, I didn't say that I left at 9:45. I ended work that day on 9:03. On 9/13, I came in at 9:00. I worked approximately 8.15 hours with no lunch. I did general work, email, phone calls, a Facebook. I had a meeting with Nuvay, 1.5 hours, meeting with Michael Peterson regarding wastewater treatment facility, a call with Rena's regarding home behind Ron, dark water, no line. He authorized emergency monies to fix. He had reviewed financial reports. I sent them previously. He had questions on First State Banking Trust statement balance, and he asked me to transfer $10 million plus dollars to Bank of Tioga that Monday. I said I would do it on Tuesday. I informed Rena's on the training about staff and myself. He said he knew about the training, but that he couldn't attend himself because he would be attending a funeral. That call took 13 minutes. I called Kurt Odigard next, and I told him that I needed to explain to Brett exactly about this dark water because I didn't know a lot about it. So Kurt Odigard said, okay, I'll be right over. He came over, and when he came, when he came, we met with Kurt to explain the home with no dark water. We called Rena's on the phone while Odigard was present so Odigard can explain the water situation to him directly. Met with Veronica later on, and just, just for the record, Veronica left approximately at noon. So this had to all taken place at four noon. To inform her, we needed to transfer monies from First State Banking Trust. That was the end of that conversation. Completed commission packet for public hearing and regular meeting. Met with staff regarding lead and copper letters and what we have to do at City Hall. I did calls and emails to First State Bank to make the wire transfer. They said they could do it right away for me. The phone call with Iverson regarding bank account transfer of $10 million plus and interest rates on regular checking account told him about the mistake that was done on Zion's bank, pulling out the loan monies from the wrong account. And I have emails from Zion Bank account to prove that. And then a text from Rena's. I text Rena's to tell him about the interest rate and the transfer of our. He texts me, and I told him about the interest rate and the transfer of monies. I completed a commission packet, and I posted the agenda. So I do also have my phone log, and it states here, the call with Rena's, called Odigard, Brett Rena's. And I also have the times it took. I talked to Brett at 9:47 in the morning for 13 minutes, which coincides with my records. And it also shows that I talked to Kurt Odigard. He came, he came over right after my phone call, and then I talked to Brett again. That is just one of the things I wanted to present. Other things that were said in the transcripts that I thought were inaccurate is when I said I tell you guys everything. I try to tell you guys everything. I have, in 64 days, I have over 31 calls to Brett. The calls average, the calls are 261 minutes. That's on an average. I talk to Brett on an average every two days about eight minutes. That's on an average. That's not including text messages, and that's not including in-person meeting. I always want to do what's best for the city, always. That is my first priority with people. That's what I pray for, and that's what I do here, and I try to do it with honesty and integrity. It sometimes goes against what people like and what people want. And. I'm sorry. It's still my job to advise so that our city will still continue to grow and prosper. And have the things that we need to have, like the amenities. People aren't gonna like that. They don't always like what's right. You know, we have a cloud, a a crowd that that feels very much against it and they can. That is their right. Their their voters here, their residents here, and they can voice their opinion. But as far as I am concerned, I've always tried to do what's right for the city and I believe that I have. Good, bad, or indifferent, I believe that is what I have done. Um I can go on saying a lot of things, but I feel like I I bring my point. A whole commission approved it and three commissioners approved me transferring that money. Um. You know, at this point, I just want to tell you guys that uh. I was feeling a little embarrassed, but I shouldn't be the one that felt embarrassed because. This should have been a private conversation. You guys should have called me right away and asked me, Abby, where did you transfer that money to? Why did you transfer it? Um it would have been so much easier and so much cleaner. Thank you, guys.
All right. So I'm gonna ask the commission if they have any rebuttal evidence or testimony that they'd like to wish to offer in relation to the matter's raise.
Yeah, I'd just like to to point out that in our in our phone call, there was there was no um. There is no other authorization to move that money. Um I, we discussed interest rates and then. She basically stated, by the way, I transferred ten million dollars today.
You're right. In your phone call, we didn't discuss authorization because I had received that authorization prior from Brett.
Well, I would like to talk about that phone call.
Talk about it.
Um you're right. You called me about the the dark water on the house. It switched into, you sent out the financial statement that Thursday, the day before. I had a chance to take a look at it. I asked you if you had a chance to look at it. The reason that it caught my eye is I seem to have an injection of five million dollars into the bank in Williston. And you walked me through what that was. I also checked notes. Um I actually had notes before I called you because I wanted to make sure that you knew what I was talking about. Um the way that that commission meeting played out. I felt a little pause that there was adamancy to stop what they was making the motion on. Um. And even after that meeting, and you even brought that up, that you talked to Jaden the night before. Um. You you had mentioned that the interest rate was higher in Williston than it was in Tyoga. And we would be losing money if our money was in Tyoga versus Williston. Jaden was there with me. He was actually right here. So at that time, I thought the interest rate was actually higher over in Williston's bank. I wrote down the dollar amounts that we had, that I knew we had based off of the financial statements. Um I had dollar amounts for the two accounts in Williston and the one in Tyoga. I asked you where the five million dollars came from. And I had to read the account numbers off to you. And I wrote down two nine two zero construction. Two nine three nine CDs and then of course the Tyoga account. I very much so. Wanted to bring that up on the agenda because I had been asked previously, hey, do we need to put in another agenda request? Since you guys have had your time to do your homework. Liz was specific during that meeting saying. I don't think it would be appropriate or even advised um if you guys. Made a substantial change in our financial position without doing your homework. That's what I was doing when I was looking through the bank statements. I was trying to identify what money we had, what it was designated for, and what could be transferred. I was doing what Liz asked me to do. I asked you if we could put it on the agenda and you said we can't do anything until Tuesday. So now I know. It wasn't gonna be on the agenda, much like the fuel station. When I asked you to put the fuel station on the agenda, guess what happened? Didn't go on the agenda because it's a hot button. It's a pressing topic. It's a contentious topic. I figured something like that would happen again because you were so adamant that we couldn't do anything that night. I actually called Liz beforehand and asked her to verse me up in writing and modification. Or modifying an agenda on the spot because I felt it was odd. That rather than asking you to do something, put something on the agenda. If it's not something that fits your agenda, I have to write it in. I do not want words put in my mouth. I did not give you authorization to transfer that money. I don't have the authorization to transfer that money. So I I very firmly want to rebuke that statement. That is not fair to me. Put words in my mouth that did not come out.
That did come out, but you allowed, correct.
It did not.
And we will have to agree to disagree. But we did, we did talk about it and you're absolutely right. We talked about the CD interest. We went through and we said, okay, there is no interest on that. And I said I'd have to check for you. You never asked me to put it on the agenda. You asked me to transfer it and I told you I couldn't transfer it till Tuesday. Because Mondays are usually our busiest days. Those are the days we have, we have payroll, we have the commission meeting. You never asked me to put it on the agenda.
So you're saying we have CDs that added up to ten million dollars that we invested into those CDs?
And we talked about that, yes, sir. We said what, where one of the accounts, where what the five million? Cause we had an influx of a five million and I said the loan. We were supposed to get an extra five million dollars from the loan.
I agree with that. You told me it was the second installment of the ten million.
Yes.
But you're saying that, and I'll start over. We invested ten million dollars into CDs and you're saying that I asked you to transfer exactly ten million dollars?
No, I put ten million plus. I didn't, I didn't put the exact amount on my nose.
And you told me that you transferred ten million?
I did transfer because I couldn't remember the exact amount.
Don't you think that's something that we would have talked about unless we didn't talk about it at all?
We did talk about it.
Uh I would also like to point out, um I I can vouch that Brett had no idea about it because. I am the one that called and told him about it when she told me about it and he had absolutely no idea that she did that.
It wasn't even on my radar being a possibility. I thought that we were gonna be talking about it on the agenda and you cannot vouch against how irritated I was when I seen you put out the agenda and it wasn't on there. I was as shocked as any, but for you to say that I knew about it and authorized it is wrong.
That you might remember things differently. That is a different thing. I'd like to bring uh Veronica Peterson uh up. Because I even spoke with her regarding the transfer.
Okay, uh Liz, we're good with that?
Liz?
I'm sorry, repeat the question.
Um we're we're onto the rebuttal on the commission side of things, but Abby would like to bring Abby or uh I'm sorry, Veronica in. To offer some remarks.
Um I think as well, so we're not in court process here, so that gets a little bit goofy. The usual rule in in court would be that if something is opened. In the course of rebuttal or in the course of cross. Um as long as Veronica's testimony is limited to any subject matter that occurred in the rebuttal, that's probably permissible. But it's a little wily, so I would ask her not to go outside of the confines of what's being discussed here. Because we're not gonna open new evidence, but if it's online with what's happening and Veronica. Is being called to testify by a party, I suppose that's fine.
So that's a yes.
That's a yes, but don't exceed the scope of what's being discussed in the city's rebuttal case.
Exactly, I have a question. Did I or did I not ask you to the money or that we need to transfer money from the First State Bank? To Bank of Tyoga because Brett had asked me to?
So. I'm gonna try to remember the accounts of my Friday. Um. That Friday morning was extremely busy. There was a lot going on. We had a pay and rebate webinar that took up quite a bit of the day. Um I was extremely stressed the week and I'd already been on overtime, so I took half the day off. Went to Williston. Um. Uh about three thirty, I think I got a phone call from Abby. And which Abby had asked me to go and pick up some of our office supplies and stuff that we already had down there. And while I was waiting for some of those office supplies and stuff, um. The topic of this ten million dollars from the CDs being transferred back to. The main depository has been a topic of discussion since May. Since before the CDs actually dropped. That that's been a topic at City Hall within the office for a while. Something that should have happened from the very beginning, it fell through the cracks. Um. But. Uh that day that I had spoke with you on the phone. When I was picking up our office supplies, you had told me that you had spoke with Jaden on the phone and you had spoke with Brett. And that I didn't have to worry about getting the CDs or the money from the CDs transferred before. We went left for training because you had done it, so that way it was done. We wouldn't have to worry about it anymore because it's been something that's been an ongoing issue. That we haven't been able to tackle for the last several months because we've been so short-staffed and backlogged with work.
Okay, you guys need to school me on this thing because. I don't know how that works. How how can you?
Are you asking the process that was typically handled for the last nine years I've been here?
No, as far as transferring money from one bank to another, I mean, that's a significant amount of money and I would assume that not this one signature is required.
So a a transfer actually only needs. A one call and confirmation and then they typical transfer, once you have a call and confirmation, the bank is gonna call back. It depends on, I suppose, their regulations when they're gonna call back and verify stuff, but they call back and verify that you have your correct uh routing and account. Information that you're transferring things to. Um. So there is a, there is a process, but I mean, it's. Not the first time that the city has ever made a transfer and that. That account that's been, what's it called exactly? The the account that has been set up through the bond that has to keep a minimum of three million dollars in it. That's the, that's the payment account we have to keep three million dollars in. So when that payment. Is made to pay the loan, we have to transfer money from the Bank of Tyoga to replenish that because we are. We have to keep three million dollars in that account. So when the CDs dropped. That's where they dropped. Typically, our process should have been prior to May twenty eighth, when those CDs were dropping, when they were coming out with CDs. We should have called ahead of time and said, these are, these CDs need to be dropped into the primary depository. Unfortunately, it was busy. We were short-staffed. People were gone. That didn't happen. Um. But typical primary depository, you mean, it should have been? The primary depository is the Bank of Tyoga. Can I ask another question? So since you guys didn't move the money from First State. Hey. The CDs are over. They expired. What happened to the money? Like, did it go into like a savings account, a checking account? Where does that, where does that money go? Does it sit in a CD making? Well, I don't, I'm just checking where it goes. But when the CDs expired, they ended up going because we didn't direct them what to do with them. The CDs ended up dropping into the money market account. That is the. The second account at First State Bank that requires us to keep that three million minimum. That's where they dropped it into that money market account. So not the account that has the ten million dollars from the loan. But the other account, the account that we're using to pay for the loan essentially, that three million that. Where they pulled the money out for the loan, or they're supposed to pull the money out for the loan.
So we have ten million dollars sitting in an account that a lower interest rate than what Toyota was offering?
Unfortunately, yes, because we were very short-staffed from this time around May, well, from the beginning of the year.
And I I understand the feeling of being short-staffed, but we're talking about ten million dollars. You'd think that would be the very top of everybody's radar at all times.
Right. There were a lot of things going on uh we said maybe that. It made it difficult and there were things that were priorities to get done too.
Thank you.
I think one of the things Veronica wants to say but can't is that I was on medical. And even though I did retire, it was boring though. Um. You have any other questions?
Um Stephen, can you add another answer either as far as? Um rebuttal of evidence or testimony provided by them. Do you have any extra comments?
No, I I wanted to understand the procedure and the policy and what normally happens, so. I've got that.
Uh Stephen. Do you have anything you'd like to?
I understand that you received phone calls. I understand that. The commission board was asking about the money, asking where it was and wanting it moved back. But again, I didn't feel like I'd heard a definite yes, move the money. From everyone when it was voted on, just from multiple individuals. Possibly. I guess I just still don't understand why. It wasn't voted on, why we didn't, why it didn't have time or why it wasn't put on the agenda. I just feel like in general, again, this is ten million dollars. It's sat here, that it sat there when we could have transferred higher to actually get that interest. But again. I just feel like just because you receive phone calls saying, hey, that money needs to be transferred from certain people, that is still needed.
And that was about in November. There was a vote for the entire commission. So I had been directed by the entire commission to do that. Um you know, the CD ended at the end of May. Uh so this would have been done in June and we put five million dollars into a new CD. So there was a lot of things going on and then I went on medical. So. There there was not a lot of time in between that, um you know. But it had been approved by the entire commission. The individuals was just the recent.
All right, Liz, I'm gonna. Need you to help me out now in navigating the the rest of this.
Sure. So I guess the. The question becomes, I I mean, really, is there any additional fact presentation from the city? I guess I should ask that. Are there any additional facts that the city wishes to offer or wishes to elicit from any party? Okay, uh we'll ask the same thing to Abby, although we made it through. Uh, we'll ask the same thing to Abby, although we made it through both primary presentation and rebuttal presentation from the city. Abby, is there anything else you wish to offer in the form of fact testimony or evidence?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Then the the question or the next step, guys, is. Once we've, we're done and we are with fact and evidence uh presentation and frankly, I think. We might be done with argument, but I'm I'm gonna open it for argument. This would be the point at which. Um, you know, if the city. Wishes to engage in a generalized discussion of the facts they've been presented. Or if Abby wishes to make any arguments or discussion relating to the facts as they've been presented. Um, you know, the two, two sets of folks can do that. The city would go first because they're the ones bringing the charge and Abby would go second. That's not a regurgitation of the facts. That's an argument of how do the facts as you perceive them meet with the allegations that are in front of both parties? So. Um, if anyone wants to make any arguments or analysis, that would be appropriate.
You know, I. You touched your mic. You can go first if you'd like, but I'd like. I guess to provide an analysis, um, that's. Coming in here, I thought there would be a real opportunity for potentially some recourse. Generally speaking, when people make a mistake. They, they don't repeat that state mistake. There's no repeatability like. Experience isn't based off of how long you've been in a position. Or how long you've been doing that job. It's how much have you learned while doing that job? So from that standpoint, um. I consider this a mistake, but I also don't have a ton of worry that that mistake would ever happen again. You know, that that's. Experience. It's valuable experience. It's something that we all. I I think I've. Come on. You know? I have paused though. Because when we, when Jayden. Preferred these charges, you said. A, you, your job was to make. The the most financially beneficial decisions for the city. And then you would say it was in your job description. You doubled down on, it's in my job description. And prior to him making the motion for suspension, you said, if you don't like my job description, you can rewrite it. Silver on board different accounts there. There was no ownership of it. It wasn't your fault. It was your job and your authority to do so. And even yet tonight. There doesn't seem to be any. Sort of acknowledgement of potential fault on your part. Now everybody else's fault and. Like I said, I I felt like there was a real opportunity for some recourse here. I don't feel that way right now. I have words put in my mouth. I'm not okay with that. I'll never be okay with that. That's, that's what I wanted to say, that our analysis was down the way now.
But you have to understand too, Brett. That that was from us. That was very. I I didn't even know what I was saying that day. I was trying to grasp the straws. Um, but. I today I do. And um. We have different accounts of what happened with the conversation that took place. But. You never asked me and and I will double down on that. You never asked me to put it on the agenda. And that is my recollection of the call. And that is what I documented.
Well, as I said before, he he had no idea you did that. So I know he didn't tell you to do that, but even if he did, or even if Jessica told you, it doesn't matter. It needs to be. Decided by all of us. It doesn't matter if one person wants you to do one thing. That's not how this works. These two sentry codes right here point that out, both of them. Under the direction of the governing body. That's not one person. That's, that's us as a collaboration. That's the governing body. Not one person acting alone. No one person should be able to move ten million dollars without everybody else's say so.
Correct. It says to draw out and at what time did I draw out? I transferred from one city account to the other.
Dispersed under the direction of the governing body.
I never.
Moving money is supposed to be for us to do, not for one person to act alone on.
I'm sorry, Jayden. I never. I transferred from one account to the other. And I didn't change. The course of the funds. On what their intended purpose was.
It doesn't matter. It needs to be decided in a vote.
And that is okay if that is what you guys decide to.
If you guys could understand a little bit from this side. It has been a hectic summer. I think you know, I'm angry on that. I don't even know if I'm gonna get in trouble for saying this, but there was not only one person out there. There was two. Two people out over the summer, the majority of it. Um. The commission meetings have been extremely stressful lately. And I had no idea that was coming. I I didn't know that it was coming. And it went from, but I told you, I I didn't know what to say. I think I asked two questions and I I apologize. I didn't review them, but. I think I asked something along the lines, you guys are upset about her transferring the money where you want it back. And then I think I asked, well, didn't you guys call her? Because you you did say that you didn't, after she said she had transferred the money, you guys said you didn't even call her. And so. In my brain, I'm trying to wonder how it went from a step one to a step three. And I know I've mentioned that before. But there was no investigation in between. It went to an immediate removal hearing. Which is extremely intimidating.
This is the investigation.
Well, I know, but sometimes you do an internal investigation. And is this the process that we're going to take as commissioners every time somebody does something wrong?
I think we. Have the opportunity for things. People doing things wrong by bringing it up at commission meetings, putting it on the agenda, letting us discuss it. I mean, crying out loud. We talked about go for eradication for. Twenty minutes. Like, do you think we wouldn't have had some healthy discussion on what to do with? Eight figures worth of money? Like that, that's how you prevent things and people from making missteps is talking about it as a group. That's the whole point. We're all here. We take the community's advice. We bring it to commission meetings. We discuss it and then we vote on it. Nobody should ever have to burden responsibility where they could potentially make a mistake. It should be all of us together, collaboration.
I I know she spoke that she's spoken with Brett many times on the phone, but since since I've been in my spot. I've had very little phone calls with her. Two or three, maybe, um. I I guess the thing that I don't understand is she's supposed to work for us. Now, how many of you have ever worked a job that you did not have to ever report to your boss? Because I never have. So her going on about business and and never reaching out to me, I see is a huge problem. And Jessica, I think going forward, this is a huge living experience for us. Maybe we need to reach out with one another more frequently and get. Feel each other out and see, um, see if there is things that are bothering one another because. I mean, clearly there is a communication issue, but I feel. I feel like I'm shut out of City Hall and I shouldn't feel like that because they're supposed to work. Uh, for us.
I guess appreciate the fact that you said that she's only called a couple of times, but do you, excuse me, do you call her and she does not answer?
Like I said. I have spoken with her a few times and every time I have one in the City Hall, I get told what we should be doing and that's not how stuff is supposed to work. You have the, the employee is not supposed to tell the employer uh what to do. That's, that's not how stuff works.
So um, I do wanna say something regarding that. Jayden, you're absolutely right. I've only spoken to you a few times. I've been through a lot of commissioners. And every commissioner has come into my office. Every commissioner has called me. This was the first time I even made a mention of it. That I haven't had a commissioner call me to wanna receive an update. To wanna talk about what's going on. To wanna get an update on the commission meeting. Uh, every Friday I get calls from Liz, calls from Jessica, calls uh from previous commissioners. Every Friday, what are we gonna discuss? What is, is there something new? Somebody wanting uh to. To uh talk about something that's not on the agenda. Things of that nature. Um, and you were the first commissioner that did not. And that's probably because in the past. That's what I'm used to. So I didn't know. If I didn't know that you wanted me to call you, I would have called you quite a bit. As much or more than Brett.
Yeah, and I, and I get it. Phones work both ways. I could come in there just as easily or call you just as easily. But like I said, every time I went into City Hall. I get told that. I'm wrong about something and I'm just, I, how how can, how can we go on like that?
So the one time you came in, we spoke about Brian Culver. Is that correct?
Yeah, we spoke about a few other things, but that was the start of it, yeah.
That is the one that you're, you're talking about. I didn't tell you how to vote. I didn't tell you what to do. I gave you my advice. And the number one thing on my job description is to give advice to the commission.
Usually when you give advice, you're asked advice. I didn't ask you about Brian Culver's deal. You just felt the need to start in on it.
We had a discussion. Yes, I started because I wasn't at the previous commission and I just wanted to discuss that, what you know, what had, what you had. What had transpired in previous commissions so that you could be updated. I, I almost feel like it didn't matter what I said today. I came here uh to uh. To give a presentation. Uh, and the decision had already been made. Uh, the decision was made then on July first. But. I, ever since you guys came into the office, I wanted to feel like you guys are doing the right thing and you guys. Are um gonna do the right thing and gonna give. Uh, everybody the the right opportunity. But I I am, you know. I'm still thankful for the time I had here. I'm still thankful for my position uh and. I'm glad that I got to do everything I got to do for the city.
You know, Abby, I do just wanna reiterate, coming into tonight, I was really. Hoping there would be an opportunity for recourse. And I'm not saying that there's not much. I don't think there is. For me personally, like I said. Terrible pause right now. For you to to double down, triple down, quadruple down on things that you say came out of my mouth. Does that mean that's how you'd feel? Absolutely not. I was hopeful. There was no agenda of July first. There was no agenda coming into this. This is due process. Okay, Liz, we need to bounce back to you to help us through, I guess, fourteen on.
Yep, I think um we've hit a discussion. So what we need to do is turn to the preferred charges. I'm gonna ask you guys to make fact findings. I'm gonna read each element of each charge. And if there's, I mean, you can give yays and nays if you think it requires additional discussion. You can certainly partake in that and reach your nays and yays. I'll try to be quick. The first charge alleges a violation of forty dash sixteen dash eleven funds controlled by governing body exceptions dispersment on order. Um, the first question is, I guess, do we all agree that in or near that the transaction, what you've already identified, would have occurred in or near the week of September nine? Let's do the easy stuff. That's the first element. Do we agree that the transaction was in or near the week of September nine of twenty twenty four?
Yes, yes. Yes.
Jess, do you think that's when the transaction occurred? I'm not saying whether it was a good one or a bad one, just the rough date.
Yeah.
Okay.
Record to document that it was upon the night.
I don't know. I don't know what day it was actually. September ninth is a Monday.
It's the thirteenth.
Okay.
I guess.
During the week of September nine.
Okay, so we agreed that the the thirteenth occurred during the week of September ninth. I mean, certainly you can be more specific. I didn't know very much at the time of drafting this. Um, the allegation then follows that the auditor. Meaning Abby. Without advanced authorization or direction. From the City of Tioga Commission. Let's take that element. Do we agree that it was Abby? I guess that's a compound question. Did Abby engage in that transaction and was the transaction without authorization from the commission?
Yes, yes. Yes.
Okay, so we have a three out of four. Finding there. Um, did, it goes on to say, did draw out and thereafter transfer the ten million dollars? I'll note that Abby has argued uh. That it wasn't a draw in the sense that it never left the the city's total coffers. Um, certainly it appears to have been a transfer. Uh, I'd like to hear argument on that. Just so you guys know, I did try to briefly search the statute. I've never dealt with a proceeding centered on this statute before, not that became contested anyway. And there's, there's no clear law. Um, as to what the, that term means. Not that I could find. It may be there, but it wasn't available to me and in relatively concise research. Um, that's the crazy thing about the law. People can have competing meanings about what. What things mean, but from your vantage point, do you think that was a draw out? And transfer? Or do you think it was only a transfer? I think there should be some discussion on that because I think that's maybe an important piece of the statute since both people are arguing it.
My opinion is. It's one bank to another. You have to draw from one bank and transfer to another. We're, we're not talking about transferring from account to account between banks. It is a drawout and transfer.
It's a transfer. It goes from one city account to. If you were to transfer money from one bank to the next bank, you don't draw that money out. That money isn't taken out of the bank. It's, it's a.
It's taken out of the bank.
I mean, it's not physically taken out of the bank.
But it is.
It's transferred. It goes from one city account to the next. It went back into the bank title. The primary depository.
Set word back into. If it was in the same spot, then it can't go back into there.
It's a transfer. It's not a draw.
If it helps you guys at all, I think, you know, if this became contested in other further proceedings, I really do think that's kind of a legal definition and so everybody's probably pretty gory on that. Um, you're expressing facts that could be interpreted both ways and we're without the benefit of greater legal clarity. So I don't want you to get. Too hung up other than to have really thought about it.
Me, it would be a withdrawal just because it's not being. If it was just a transfer, it'd be within the same bank. Since it was moved from one bank to another bank. To me, it was withdrawn, then. Transferred into an account in the bank here. Wasn't just transferred to the bank.
You know, if you can go from bank to bank and it's not considered a withdrawal, it actually is a withdrawal, like. Going into split cash, it's like. That in my mind would be the only possible thing to qualify as withdrawal. I don't think that's right.
I don't know. When we talked about state auditor. Wouldn't make it very clear that it was not a withdrawal. But. I'm, I'm going to just, I do, I believe it was a transfer. And and I don't know the legals of it. I I really don't. And, and I don't know the legals of it, I, I really don't. It never changed its funding purpose. It never left the city's possession.
Okay Liz.
So I'm going to treat that as a three, three one on that element for now. Um, and the final element in the allegation is that the commission was only notified after the transfer had occurred. And I know that there's a fact dispute there, because Abby has provided testimony on her side that says, hey, I actually, it was known because I was told to. The commission board says absolutely not, that was never indicated. Um, with exception to Jess, who, who said she was ticked off and told her to transfer it. So we've got some split testimony there. Uh, do your best to reconcile it and discuss that element between you.
She never got authorization for it. If she did, and you told her to do that, then I think she probably would have brought that up at the last meeting, but she didn't. So why wasn't brought up at the last meeting if that's what happened?
I told her, I told her to transfer it before the next week.
Yeah, and at the last meeting, um, when I asked her why she would do something like that, that never came up. She just said, it's in the job description. Why didn't she say that?
I, I think you're, listen, I get it, this is a little rough. But I think that we can all agree that there is a human component here. And when somebody feels like there could be possibly uh, a threat of their job being taken away, or if there's a threat of being accused of mishandling the money, and, and it's, it's sprung on you, it's, it's hard to think of the words that you need to produce. There wasn't any communication with Abby. And yes, you're right, we have the right to bring it up at a commission meeting, it, it should be talked about. But I also think that I get it, Abby, I think was thrown through a loop. I was, I didn't know what to ask or say.
Usually if you don't know what to ask or say, then you probably just shouldn't say anything at all.
I'll tell you, my, my observation is that I allegedly told her to do it Friday, the last weekday before a meeting, and it was brought up at the meeting, the very first thing on my mind would be the last thing that I worked on, and it never got brought up. Because it didn't happen. Alright, so, are we doing, Liz, are we doing role on this century code as well?
Yes, um, the next, uh, so I'm going to treat that, I gu- I guess I didn't, I don't know what Stephen's view is, but right now we have um, two in favor of finding the violation. Jess, I, I read you as saying you're not in favor of finding out after the fact, because you directed it. Stephen, I don't know that I heard your remark, I'm trying to pay attention, but also take notes, what do, do you have a perspective on that piece? Are you ready to move on to the next one?
My perspective on it is, I believe that none of us knew till after the fact. I don't believe there was permission given to do the transfer slash withdrawal. I completely believe that none of us knew until after fact, and it was done.
Okay. The next allegation alleges a violation of forty dash sixteen dash oh three. Again, I think we can all agree, this is the first element, that in or near the week of September 9th, perhaps September 13th, but in that generalized week, do we all agree that that date still stands as being relevant and correct?
Yes, yes.
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 Okay. Um, that the auditor acted outside of the scope of her statutory authority in relation to the transfer, and I don't want you to take that apart just yet, because you've subbed it out. The next, the allegation specifically is that the auditor failed to present the commission communications from the Bank of Tioga and/or other parties relating to the transfer. What's the feeling about that assertion?
I think she failed to do that, yes.
Yeah, I agree.
I see it from a different point of view.
I believe she also failed.
So we're going to treat that as a three one again. And the next part is that in the alternative, or in addition to that determination, she failed to properly comply um, with subsection eleven of that statute, because members did not direct the transfer, and the commission was not promptly informed. I think you've already determined on a three four basis that there wasn't authorization for the transfer, but was the commission promptly informed?
No, we're not promptly informed.
I don't know what time she transferred it, but I also know the only reason I found it is because Jaden told me. And then I got a response via text after the fact, what had happened, so I'm going to say no, I was not informed promptly.
Isn't, is there some sort of receipt that would show when the funding is transferred? There, there has to be a receipt.
There probably. There probably is, Jess, I don't know that we have that evidence in front of us, and frankly, I, I don't know the, the routine or the system, or, you know, the, the ability and practice of the bank in timestamping. If it was an electronic transaction, presumably there would be some timestamp, but I don't think we know that tonight.
Well, it says, because the commission members did not direct the transfer, so yeah, she failed to do that, because we didn't direct her to do that.
But I did.
We didn't, the governing body that's on the century code.
But I was part of that board, that the whole board directed her to do it.
We don't, we don't make decisions unless there's a forum, and there's a forum when you tell.
I'm talking about in November, Brad, I'm not trying to be argumentative here, but I'm, I'm saying this has been a lengthy discussion. We have talked about it over and over. It's part of the reason I was so upset that the money had not been transferred yet. Because in my brain, I think it takes ten minutes. But also in their defense, they were busy, they had two people in and out of the office. Abby has done a wonderful job for the city of Tioga. To my knowledge, she has done nothing wrong. Ever. Are you guys really willing to throw away all that knowledge and experience?
When she breaks century codes, yeah.
Well, don't put the cart before the horse yet. Even if you find a violation, a violation is different than a sanction or an ultimate outcome. So I'm not telling you what to judge, or prejudge, or not judge, but I don't want you to get ahead of yourselves. We're only talking about the fact basis for the violation, not what happens if there is one, so bear that in mind. So is it, uh, Mr. Die, do you have anything to share on this particular element? It again appears to be in controversy between several of the commissioners.
I believe that she did fail to get all the board's approval to do the matter. As for being informed promptly, I personally was not informed by her of this decision, so to me, yes, she failed on that as well.
I want to re-raise the point that Jessica made, because I think it's worth considering, and Abby repeatedly raised it. And what about the prior citation to minutes with commission authorization? How does that float with the board? What does the prior, because I think you can make two ar- well, three arguments. And I'll just be clear, because I want the board to analyze that. I can, I think you could say the transaction was not authorized. That's argument one. Argument two is that, and this is kind of what I'm asking you, the trans, the transaction was once authorized. It was very, very tardy. It was unknown to the new administration. And then it took place without actual knowledge to the new administration. And the third argument is, it was completely authorized, because it was made by the prior administration. So can you guys discuss those three things? Because I just know that that is going to be a point of contention, even when we get to sorting out what should happen. And you don't have to go forever, but I, I think it's important that you discuss that element.
Well, I think um, I, I think if, if the board rules on something, whether it was the previous board, if they ruled on that, then she should have did it as soon as possible, and she didn't. So I would say that now a new commission is um, taking the reins, and we are so far past when that happened. I, I feel like that's just void, I, I mean, that's, that's not really how stuff works. I mean, you don't get to just uh, not do what you're told for a year and then do it, and then everything is all fine and forgiven.
Definitely don't think that um, any motions made by previous commissioners would be considered void by any means. That would be a little absurd, um. I do think that uh, she had the permission. Again, there's a human component. Again, they were slammed. Again, there was two people out that were sick. I am sorry that people have to take medical leave. And I am sorry it wasn't done, I, I have felt guilty over it. Why didn't I push? I'm not the financial commissioner, but I feel guilty that I didn't try to get somebody to do it done sooner, so that you wouldn't consider it void.
It, are you saying there was no time to get it done? I mean, you said that, you know, there was a medical leave and short staff, but was there no time to get this done? Because you just said that she's never did anything wrong, ever, which is, that's impressive. I mean, I, that's, that's amazing, that somebody can never make a mistake ever.
That seems to my knowledge that would recall, uh, recall here, at least, I wouldn't recall.
But um, I think she had time to do it, she didn't do it.
Well, CDs matured in May. Something had to have been done with that money, does that mean that it was transferred into a town, a will, it's the first day, right? Well, at that point, you shock your shock, you made your transfer that you had approval on. Anything after that needed secondary approval. There has got to be a reason why that those CDs that matured stayed in Williston at a, a lower interest rate than what the Bank of Tioga projected that we were earning. For something long. And then for, for three months to sit over in an outside bank, knowing that we were earning less interest. Knowing that. But then telling Jaden and I that we were getting more interest by having it. So we're doing our homework, we're trying to find out details, and then we find out after the money had already been transferred that, oh, well, we were getting like one point five or one percent less over in Williston, and you're just like, who are, who are we working with right now? Like, we're clearly not working together. So Liz, that's my summary of your question. I think it's pretty clear.
Okay, Mr. Die, do you have a position on those three possibilities?
I understand that it was spoken about on the previous commission, but again, this is a new commission board now. And we obviously weren't aware of that, that was never brought up to us, even when asking questions about this. Until now, I feel like she had plenty of time to do so, but at this point, with the new commission, with the time that has passed, that she should have, it does require permission from this commission board that sits here. I feel like it term better late than never does not apply here. It should have been spoken about with us, should have been agreed upon with us, and moved on from there, not being like, well, I was told to, no, I have permission. He didn't have permission from us, I feel like, in general, she just did not have permission.
Okay. I'm taking the discussion um, as the factual findings of the commission, and will incorporate by reference the recording. Um, and it seems that on um, all counts, based on the analysis, that a majority of commissioners find a violation on all counts alleged. Am I understanding that correctly, noting uh, Jessica's dissent on certain elements of each issue? Is that a correct summary? Okay. The next question, um, and this is probably the hardest one you have, in layman's terms, is what happens next? If you, and you have, um, if there's a majority find a violation on one or more accounts, what is the appropriate remedy and course moving forward? I know that this is a removal hearing, um, but simply because that's one of the remedies does not mean that that's all of the remedies. And it is important that the commission flips every side of every coin in determining how it might proceed with Abby's employment with the city. So go ahead and speak amongst yourselves, I'll jump in if, you know, if we need to guide that.
You know, guys, I don't want to keep repeating myself, but logging into this, I thought there would be every opportunity in the world to recourse. And I'm not saying that there's not, there, there's definitely potential. In light of allegations, my confidence level is low, but I don't want that to sway you guys either way, so think hard what you want to do. I mean, this is important, that I would never take this lightly. I'm not going to take my personal feelings at the moment, as mad as I am, to influence anything one way or the other, this, this needs to be filed carefully.
There's a human component. Instead of calling her and asking her, why didn't you, why didn't you put her on, why didn't you suspend her and then do an internal investigation? So that you could get answers. Instead, we're still, from the time the removal hearing was brought up, I'm still sitting here trying to process this.
This is the investigation, that's why she comes forward with her evidence, we have ours, and that's why we're having a discussion right now.
Let me ask you this, and you can think it in your brains, instead of saying out loud if you want to. The, the options loosely speaking, and there are many more than I will recite, but one option is Abby retains her current position without any modification or condition. You find a violation, they are what they are, but Abby goes back to work and everything moves forward the way it always has, and the way it is at the moment. That's option one, find a violation but no changes to anything. Loosely speaking, option two is Abby keeps her employment, but you acknowledge the violation and you try to put in conditions and provisions that would prevent the same type of disharmony and dysfunction from happening in the future. And the third option, loosely speaking, is Abby loses her job and she is removed from her office. There is obviously latitude between each of those three major decisions, but those are the three large subsets of what we're dealing with here. And it is serious. Brett's absolutely right about this. It's a person's job, it's a person's livelihood, it's the business of the city. Those are very difficult things for the commission to entertain.
We can talk about it out loud, Liz.
I'm sorry, Brett, I didn't hear you say that one more time.
This is something we can talk about out loud.
It absolutely is. If you're uncomfortable, do it in your brain first, but if you can do it out loud, I definitely think it's, it's good.
Well, I think for me, retain without modification is not, not my cards anyway. I think retain with modification is possible. But now I'll say, I will never have confidence to answer that phone call ever again. It's gonna be texts or emails, you're on edge, and I can't function. I, I won't, I'll be so inefficient and ineffective, and I'm here to work for the city, the people of Tioga, I, I can't.
Do you guys have a plan in place for who would take Abby's spot?
No.
That's the position to fill.
I have no plan, like I said, walking into this, I thought.
I did, that wasn't a setup question, I just, I'm literally, I'm asking, a city auditor position is not easy to fill, and those, those girls are busy. And they've been short-staffed, so they're behind already. If you remove Abby permanently, is that going to hurt the city because now you've taken her out of that position and they're falling even more behind? I am absolutely open to modifications. I'm absolute, absolutely open to that, this is a new board. Give her a chance, it's been three months. Three months. We've been doing things a certain way for a long time. Give her a chance.
Jess, when you're proposing the possibility of modifications, what are you proposing? What do you think would be curative if that were an option considered by the commission? I mean, I just don't think it helps to work in too much gray space, so I don't know if you have anything concrete, but I
Well, I, I believe the girls in the office would absolutely agree with me that modifications would need to be made to make sure that policies are understood and their job descriptions are understood, so that they know when and where they cannot transfer money. I think those are discussions that would need to be had. Um, I don't even know that we can make those modifications now, but some guidance so that we feel comfortable and the city staff feels comfortable at doing their job.
The possibility of that is, when her job description is supposed to follow the century code, that Jayden just wrote charts again. So how do we write a job description telling her what she can and can't do if it's already built into her job description, saying you gotta follow the century code?
And my guess is that she would not be transferring money without anyone's permission anytime soon.
And I, I agree, like I said, experience isn't based off of the time you worked somewhere, it's what you've learned along the way. And the likelihood of a repeatability on something this serious probably isn't great. And I believe that. But I didn't believe that somebody would put words in my mouth, so I don't know if there's a whole lot of confidence that that would repeat. I don't have a lot of trust right now.
I think it would repeat. I, I've seen, uh, no, no evidence of remorse for her actions, in fact, she's doubled down and she's even, um, spoken things that we know aren't true. So, I mean, I, I don't, I don't see, I don't see how this can be resolved that way.
I would have to agree with Jayden on that, especially with the no remorse. And many times showing that words were placed in other people's mouths, things were talked about that weren't. I just don't see how changing the law necessarily could help the situation.
Liz, I just wanna clarify, a motion needs to be made with one of the three options.
I think that's accurate. I mean, you guys could, I don't wanna mislead you. If you want time beyond the hearing to, to take under advisement the penalty and continue the suspension and deal with whatever you need, I don't want you to rush to judgment if you don't feel confident in the judgment of outcomes tonight. You can certainly take under advisement, um, what you've, you have found, and look into outcome-based solutions and reconvene a hearing only as to outcome. That's certainly, that's certainly possible, uh, if you wish. Um, but you may also, yes, if, if you are decided this evening, you can make a motion as to outcome. Um, I neglected to put it in the out, the outline, um, but I would note that in most proceedings where there is a penalty or sanction, um, the party responding to them, uh, can speak. In a criminal case, a defendant speaks in sentencing, in a civil case, a de- a defendant speaks as to damages. Um, if Abby has any remarks about potential outcome and she wishes to share them, I would, I would think it appropriate to allow her to. Um, if she doesn't wish to, she doesn't have to, but we should throw that in before you get to motion or anything else.
No, I do not.
Okay, well, the commission can decide whether they wanna take things under, you've found the violations by a majority. Um, you've discussed outcomes, if you're not done discussing, you don't have to be. If you wish to bifurcate and take it under advisement, you can, what's your feeling there?
I'd like to make a motion to terminate Abby Salinas's, her position as auditor.
I would second that.
All right. We have a motion in a second to terminate Abby Salinas from her position as city auditor. Is there any discussion on that? Is there any discussion? If not, a move to a vote?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Um, that's majority, and again, this is this is massive, you know, I also would like to vote, and I vote yes. So that motion carries. I think that concludes our, our hearing tonight. Um, I want to thank everybody for being here. Um, I guess we'll need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second to adjourn, a move to a vote?
Yes.
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 I'm going to depart.
Thank you, Liz.
Thanks, guys.